Good evening and welcome to the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education meeting. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have public comment. And we'll start with our in-person public comment. The first we have is from Connor Webb about secure gun storage education. If you could just state your name at the mic, thanks.
Good evening. Is this, there we go. I am Connor Webb. I am joined by my fellow leadership members Nora Whiteside and Emily O'Connor. I'm the president of the March for Our Lives Gilderlin chapter. We've been over, we've been active over the past few months. We're here tonight to ask for your continued support in ending the scourge of gun violence. Between August first and November thirtieth of last year, there have been at least one hundred and four instances of gunfire on school grounds, killing twenty and wounding seventy-nine people. At least five point four million children live in a home with at least one unlocked and loaded weapon, and up to eighty percent of school shooters under the age of eighteen acquire their weapon from the home, including the recent Oxford, Michigan shooter who killed four. Every town for gun safety and its grassroots organizations Moms Demand Action and Students Demand Action have released a comprehensive roadmap to prevent school shootings. And on the top of their list is the secure storage of firearms. We want the critical stakeholders gathered here to know that we are scared. We are being needlessly traumatized over and over because of these threats of shootings. Tackling school safety must include addressing gun violence that happens inside and outside of our classrooms. We're demanding more because we deserve more. And so, we are calling for the board to pass a resolution requiring education to parents about secure firearm storage. This is a not a novel or an unusual request. Already, school districts across the country in states as diverse as Vermont, Texas, California, Arizona, South Carolina, Georgia, and others covering more than two million students have passed similar resolutions calling for parental education on firearm safety. Just last week, the school board in Montgomery County, Maryland, the fifteenth largest school district in the country, passed a similar resolution. We want Gilderlin to be the next. We all may be scared, but we're also determined to use our collective voices to stop gun violence. This is also in conjunction with the work the district has been doing in developing the budget with a focus on promoting social and emotional health by potentially increasing mental health counselors, which every town has also identified as the second priority in reducing gun violence. So I thank you all very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Hey Linda, do we have any more public comment in person? Okay, so we have three public comments that are written in. I will read them. The first is from Stephanie Smith. It says, "Dr. Wiles, can you please use your authority to do what is right and needed for our children and lift the mask mandate in school? Since the governor lifted this mandate for everyone else in New York State, why can't these kids be included? So many of these kids are now able to have the freedom to participate in sports and activities outside of school without a mask, as well as keep masks off virtually anywhere except school. Can you please explain to me the rationale for this? When we know that most kids are at such low risk of being extremely ill with COVID, not to mention our numbers are the lowest they have been since November? Why can't be, why can't now be the time to give these kids some normalcy back? Thank you for your time. The next public comment is from Christina Nichols. "A video has surfaced of a current board member's post on their social media platform. While I am all about free thought exchange and expression of personal opinions, I'm very concerned that the president of the school board, an elected public position, has chosen to post private and confidential emails from parents on her social media page. These private emails have also contained personal information, such a name and email address. This is completely inappropriate behavior and should not be tolerated by the administration. Not only is she breaking an ethics violation, it is extremely unprofessional. It lacks a moral compass and she should be ashamed of herself. I would expect more character and dignity from someone who holds a leadership position such as hers. I would like to know what further steps are being taken to make sure this never happens again. Thank you. Christina Nichols." I just want to clarify, since we always correct incorrect public comments, because that's in reference to me that I've never shared confidential emails. So I don't think there's any further steps to take. And the third public comment is from Melissa Dover. "Good evening. Last week, our governor lifted the mask mandates on our businesses, yet failed our children once again by leaving the mandate intact for our schools. Can you please explain the logic in this? Isn't there something more our schools can do? I urge you to consider when the time comes, it's, and it's left up to schools again, to give these kids a break. I also plead with you not to treat our children differently based on their vaccine status. As this past winter has shown to many, the vaccines haven't done much to curb COVID and our children are the lowest risk. I also urge you to reconsider the vaccine mandates on children in high-risk sports. Many parents in this Gilderlin school district are beyond frustrated with all these mandates, yet do not feel safe enough to voice these opinions, or feel as if their positions don't really matter to any of the school board, especially after repeated emails have been left unanswered. Despite what some people may think that children are resilient and learn from others, many are suffering silently. Of course, they go along with it and try to make us happy by not complaining to you, but many children are suffering more than you know. They feel as though they can't be heard, or it doesn't matter if they can. If they are, they have trouble hearing their teachers. They want to see their friends' faces. Our kids feel helpless and feel like the people who are supposed to look out for them and their mental health have failed them and don't care. And it's frustrating to them because it is also hypocritical when you see the crowds on TV at football games and concerts. And yet, our children are still being accosted and harassed by school employees to put their masks up when they are seeking a simple break from them. I ask you, as the board, to consider all sides of this, and the people who are afraid to speak out, and the people who are truly suffering with anxiety and depression from these masks. Consider letting masks and vaccines be a choice when it comes down to it. Please keep the parents as who make, who makes the choice for our children to be masked or vaccinated, not the governor or you. Thank you for your time, Melissa Dover." Linda, do we have any more public comments? Thank you. So I, the mask, the couple of public comments about masks, I know we are going to talk about the mask mandate down below under superintendent information, so we can have that conversation then. And the students that spoke today, I don't know if you have any, anything, because you mentioned a resolution, if something you could email us, or information you could email the board so we could look at that? Does that sound good?
Every time I have resources on that, I need to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, the consent items. This includes the minutes of February first, meeting, the CPSC and CSC recommendations, personnel action, and the financials. Can I have a motion to approve the consent items? Nate, second. Rebecca, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Is Gloria on there yet, or you're in or?
She was, and then she jumped out.
Okay.
Yeah, I get both links open.
That's okay. All right, it passes eight zero. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to information items, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, I'm going to start with some excellent news. We have six Gilderlin teachers who have been recognized as master teachers. So on February fourth, Governor Hochul announced the selection of two hundred and thirty New York State master teachers to join the statewide network of educators. The master teacher program is a statewide network of the highest performing STEM teachers who are also dedicated to sharing their expertise with peers and attracting high school students to careers in STEM. So we are pleased and honored to announce that the following teachers have been accepted into the New York State master teacher program. Our sincere congratulations go out to all of them, and they include Ashley Gerard and Stacy Demira, both from Farnsworth Middle School, and then four from Gilderlin High School, Max Corbett, Alicia McTernan, Jared Foro, and Deb Boyce. So huge congratulations to them, but I also want to recognize our school district because I happened to be on a meeting last week with some representatives from across the region and many from SUNY Albany, and I learned at that meeting that Gilderlin has the highest number of selected master teachers in our region and potentially the state. I would have needed to go through those two hundred and thirty names to see if it was the state, but either way, we are a standout because this individual said, "So what exactly is in the water in Gilderlin?" And I just said, "Excellent." Yay. So I'll just keep going here, I have a long list tonight. The first item is a reminder that the Gilderlin Chamber of Commerce is going to sponsor its annual State of the Town Forum. And that's from seven thirty AM to nine AM on Tuesday, March first. And that is going to be a virtual event. I should have some registration information coming my way soon. The event is always a great opportunity for the Gilderlin community to come together. I am one of the invited speakers to talk about the state of Gilderlin Central School District, and it's always a pleasure to be part of that event, and, you know, hopefully lots of folks will be able to come. My second item is a memorandum of agreement for review. Attached, you have a four or five-page memorandum of agreement, still for your first read, for information between the Gilderlin Central School District, the town of Gilderlin, and the Gilderlin Police Department. So this is to outline our arrangements and our understandings about our school resource officer, who is stationed here in the high school, but who serves the entire district. Part of our safety plan requires that we have a formalized agreement with the town that really lays out our expectations and their expectations for how this program will work. So we've been working with Chief McNally and his team, really for the last several, almost months, certainly several weeks, to put together this MOA. It's been reviewed by numerous stakeholders, including parents, teachers, our administrators, students, the court system, parole board. A lot of folks have looked at it. So I'm going to invite the board to take a look at it, and then at our next meeting, we'll ask for the board to go ahead and act on it and have it in place.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
About that? So is there a difference between this MOU? I know it has to be updated, but from the previous MOU?
We have never had an MOU.
Okay.
In the past, we've had, I would say more of an informal understanding of the role, and we would communicate more through conversation than we would in a written agreement. But the written agreement is actually a requirement for our safety plan. It needs to be attached to it. So that's why we have formalized that.
Thank you.
Do you want to take questions on this? Back to the next one.
We can take questions now if it'd be helpful.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a question, Nate?
Well, I just, my concern, I mean, does it say anything about whether the SOR, SRO, excuse me, is it armed, SOR, SRO?
SRO, School Resource Officer.
Sorry.
Yes.
Is that, is it covered whether they can carry?
Yes, it is an armed officer. Go ahead, Judy.
What is the contract arrangement for pay? I've forgotten. Is town and, and school both?
It has evolved over time, but at this point, and I'm going to turn to Neil to help me, we actually pay for the portion of the salary that matches the hundred and eighty days where the officer is actually here. So I don't know if I didn't quite get that right, Neil?
Yeah, so we deliver a portion of the officer's regular salary, recognizing the time that they're working for the school district in that capacity.
So we pay them as if they're our full-time salary during the school year, I mean, our full-time employee, their salary matches that, and then the rest of the year, the town pays their salary?
The town pays their salary all year long. We pay the town.
They bill us.
Okay.
We pay the town for our share.
Okay, thank you.
And right now, there's, it's one SRO at the high school, right?
That's right. So, and he's here right now. There's Officer Alston sitting in the back. His office is here, but he could tell you, he gets called to all of our buildings to assist in a variety of ways.
So this is up for info, and then next time, we can still ask more questions?
All right, any other questions on that? The next item is the results of the thought exchange, and I can pull up the reports that we put together, assuming all the technology works for me.
Computer, we have to get it there.
Yeah. You know, like, yeah, it's actually, it's, yeah.
All right. All right.
All right. So a week ago, we released the thought exchange to our school community writ large. It was one thought exchange, but we were able to structure it so that different audiences would engage with one another separately. So students could log in and do the thought exchange and see the thoughts of their peers and write them. We had another category for parents, guardians, and community members, and then the third category was faculty and staff. So what I'm going to do tonight, I have, we closed this at five o'clock last night, so we've not done a ton of analysis. These reports are kind of automatically generated by Thought Exchange, and the themes in it are AI themes, the artificial intelligence themes. So it's still kind of a little rough around the edges, but because it just closed and we're in the thick of doing our budget, I thought it would be good for you to get a feel for what's here, and then we'll fine-tune it a little bit, and then it'll be posted to our website. So I'm going to start with our parent results. And just some basics here. So we had a hundred and eighty-seven, this is parents, guardians, community members, who submitted a hundred and ninety-five thoughts, and they provided eight thousand six hundred and ninety-one ratings. I'm going to start by just showing some of the top thoughts, and then I'll jump down, you can see some of the themes that were covered as well, but I'll just start with the thoughts. So top thought has to do with teacher retention and teacher pay and making sure our staff stay here. You see bathrooms get mentioned. Class size comes up quite a bit. These are some of the top thoughts. Scroll. Smaller class sizes. Support for great teachers invaluable. Smaller class sizes again. I think I skipped the start, the ending time for middle school is also on here. The whole notion of maintaining programs as we're making decisions. Again, class sizes come up again, especially with COVID, also with the middle school, small classes. Some reference to building condition, fixed problems in the building, smaller class sizes, smaller class sizes. Elementary with built-in recess. More upgrades in the high school. Well-rounded, high-quality educational opportunity. Less administrators. More class size, traffic out in front of our buildings. Maintaining programs. Drop-off, pickup, and so on. So there's some themes here, an observation about this and really all of the groups. It was, even though the question that we asked was, "What are your priorities for the general operating budget?", we heard about a lot of things that have nothing to do with the general operating budget. And here, this is the parent group again, I'll just point out some of the highest rated categories. So there's still a lot of commentary around the condition of our bathrooms. Again, those are now under the work of our capital project that's going on now and will continue over the next two summers, so we're continuing to address those. You see the class size piece there comes up quite a bit. Another area that came up a lot was our school lunch program. When we see the students report, this is high on their list, too. You may have heard that, you know, we've run out of food in the fourth lunch. And that has been not untrue, but it's not necessarily, well, it isn't a budget item. First of all, our school lunch program is not part of our general operating budget, but also, we are struggling, like everyone, with supply chain issues. So we literally can't get some of the things we want for our cafeteria, and we've also had some staffing shortages. So we're, you know, certainly working through all of those things, and we hear loud and clear from our students that, you know, they, they're hoping to have a more robust set of choices as the day unfolds. But you can see other categories. They talk about mental health. This is parents again. Time comes up, learning issues. I also want to point out the Wi-Fi. Following our cyber incident almost a year ago now, we had to disable our bring-your-own device network for safety and security reasons. It's a huge vulnerability. And parents are feeling it, our students are really feeling it, as well as our staff. And I'll just say that that, too, is not connected to our general operating budget. We are addressing that. We've got some plans in place to try to make our systems more robust in order to support multiple identities on our, on our website. But that is a huge one. And of course, there's interest in masks. So that's, you know, quick parents piece. Go ahead, Barbara.
On the, the week of the Gilderlin, have you talked to Cliff about that? What, is that part of our repairs that are already undergoing? Apparently, this individual said it's been going on for years.
So again, we just saw these yesterday, and I haven't talked to Cliff about it. I don't know, Neil, you're aware off the top of your head if it's part of our current capital project?
Yeah, I don't know that level of detail to know if that's part of the plan or not.
We're definitely, we're going to dig into a lot of this stuff more thoroughly. So let me, oh, go ahead, Blaca.
Are there were comments about the food program, the lunch program, and how we've run out of some of our supplies? Just wondering, do we make an effort ever to go local, or are we talking about like the supply chain nationally?
We do go local. Matter of fact, Megan Bates, who's our school lunch director, is one of the leaders in the area of making those connections to local producers and trying to expand the supplies that we get close to home in order to provide for our students. So we're doing a lot of that.
Okay, great.
But it's a combination of both, the national supply, but also, well, it's February, it's kind of tough to get fresh produce in February. But it is definitely a priority. Megan has actually worked as part of the legislative agenda to promote that. Senator Hinchey actually invited us to come to her press conference, supporting a bill to expand the ability to use more local-sourced businesses and farms in order to bring products to schools. Because of bidding requirements, there's sometimes some artificial hurdles there to doing the work. So we're very committed to that.
Great, thank you.
Let me jump over to students, and I'll do the same kind of, you know, thirty-foot overview. We had three hundred and seven students. We had two hundred and eighty-three thoughts and sixteen thousand ninety-two ratings. And let me just give you the top thoughts here. So almost every one of these top thoughts is about Wi-Fi. So you can see very much that this is on the minds of the students. So this is the BYOD issue and the struggles that we all have connecting our own phones to the network. So this is really a high priority that we work through it. So I'm going down here. There's, you see, fourth lunch, cell service, cell service. Wi-Fi, websites blocked. Wi-Fi, commentary about bathrooms and sinks. Give you a minute to look there. Lunch and Wi-Fi were popular areas of thoughts. Let me show you the themes here. So you clearly see the priorities. Wi-Fi, lunch, hall monitors. Students are not asking for more hall monitors, in case you're wondering. Bathrooms come up. So we are still expending those funds that they have all been accounted for. So the, there's actually a number of funding pathways. This is connected to the Wi-Fi question. In addition to Smart Schools, we have our capital project, we have E-Rate. I know we just submitted an application, not at, we just did the work to, or get some things purchased through E-Rate. And we also have our federal relief funds that have some amount of technology in there, but most of them are those first three areas. All right, so that's the big topics with our students. And then let me go back to faculty and staff. So we had a hundred and forty-nine employees jump on with a hundred and four thoughts and forty-eight fifty-five in terms of ratings. And a lot about our TAs, increasing salaries, maintaining or increasing staffing, school end times, class size, appreciation for all staff, more salary, smaller class sizes, hire more teachers to reduce class size, staffing, substitute teachers and full-time subs. Again, that's been a real struggle, even if we have the resources to pay for them, which we do, it's very hard to find them. Lots about class size continuing there. Comment about the positivity project. Time change. Building upkeep. So very similar themes across all, all three groups. And then I think that's the end of the first page. And then let me just do the themes. And then let me just do the themes. So again, very similar kinds of themes going across. Comments, thoughts, questions? We'll get this cleaned up. We'll post it. Go ahead, Nate.
Class sizes. Is the issue we have physical? Meaning, do we have the space for more classes? Is it a lack of teachers? We have the space, but we don't have the teachers to spread the classes out? Or is it both? A little bit of more, a little bit of one, a little bit of less? I mean, what can we do?
Well, the big issue, and I'm foreshadowing March 8th here, is the middle school. The class sizes there are very high. We have, over time, you know, tried to manage that. And with the middle school and the teaming model, it's not like simply adding a section like we do if we have a bubble class in third grade at GES. When we have high class sizes, it becomes a package deal. We're building a team, and then we're adding on the special area classes, you know, art, music, technology, and so on. So it becomes a very expensive proposition in order to address class size. However, you know, not to steal any thunder, we have not addressed this in past years because it is such a big-ticket item. We can't avoid it anymore. So that is, the middle school is the biggest issue. Class sizes in the high school are reasonable. At the elementary level, we've been able to stay within our guidelines for the most part. So that's something to look toward in a couple of weeks.
It's a combination of both of those factors, space and...
We have the space at Farmsburg.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, we have the space. But it's really the personnel that makes it a very expensive move. But the, you know, the data shows that this isn't a blip. It's not like a one year, we have a large class moving through. As we look at the grades coming up, this is a problem that's not going away. And, you know, honestly, it's a great problem to have. I'd rather have our enrollments growing than the opposite. Go ahead, Seema.
I just have a question about the start time because there were budget implications this year for that and trying to avoid, you know, having to do that next year where, you know, we have to use part of the budget for that that's not planned. I didn't know, I know, I may have asked already, I don't remember, about if you started talking about those times for next year.
So we've had a couple preliminary conversations about what start time can look, should look like next year. It's very clear that we have to do some adjusting because we don't have enough time between the runs. However, I don't see it as a budget issue where we have to, you know, hire more drivers because honestly, even if we could, they're just not there. So to build a solution that has more runs isn't going to be sustainable. We'll have the same level of struggle that we have this year. So I am bringing together a small team to do another kind of deep dive in what solutions could there be, understanding that we really don't want the elementary to go any earlier and we don't want the middle to go any later. So what can we do in between to make the system work better? And, you know, it came out in many places in the thought exchange, and, you know, we all have eyes to see that it has been a struggle 100%. However, I don't know if everyone saw, there was a story in the Times Union, I think it was earlier this week, kind of reiterating the research about adolescence and sleep and start time. And they featured us to say Gilderland did it. Now granted, it's not pretty, year one, so we do need to do some work to get it where our buses can get in at the appropriate time and, you know, hopefully the traffic things can be addressed a little bit. But there are, you know, two things in Gilderland we can't change. One is the traffic, and the other is the location of our buildings, unless we're, like, really starting over from scratch, which I don't think we're going to do. But I just want to thank everyone who participated in the thought exchange. It's wonderful to get some feedback and, you know, understand what's really on everybody's mind. Go ahead, Blanca.
It's closed now, right?
Yeah, closed at 5 o'clock on Monday.
Okay.
All right. I think I have several more things, so I'll come back to my thought. So my next item, again, this is presented tonight for a first read, but I'll say right off the bat that if everyone is comfortable with our proposed plan for this memorial scholarship award for our dear colleague Damian Singleton, I would love for us to be able to formalize it so we can actually begin the process of raising the funds. But a couple of weeks back, I met with Jen Singleton and then right after that with Mr. Piscatelli and Candace Colarno from the guidance office, who coordinates our awards, and tried to put together a memorial award that would capture the values that Damian embodied in his life and work. And so what we have is a scholarship that will recognize student or students, depending on how successful we are with fundraising, fundraising, who has overcome unique challenges and embodies ideals that Dr. Singleton championed, social justice, inclusion, and enrichment for all. So the purpose of the award will be to aid in the cost of continued education without regard for grade point average or college majors. This award would also be, the individual who gets it or individuals would be selected by an awards committee so that it doesn't require anyone to write an essay or, it doesn't create any barriers for someone to be considered for it by having to do other kinds of things. So we've already received a donation, so we're already opened the account. Very generous donation. So I will just leave it at that. Our goal next is to start raising some funds in order to do this for this school year.
And how are we going to do that?
Well, we're going to work with our partners to get the word out, the Gilderland Teachers' Association, the Administrators' Association. We will communicate out through the district office to remind everyone about all of the scholarships that we have, but point out that this is a new one. We'll reach out to former colleagues, you know, other assistant superintendents, thinking about putting an ad of some sort in the enterprise, not funded by the district, to let graduates, former colleagues, retirees know about the award. And Jen Singleton has said she's happy to help spread the word, perhaps in circles that we wouldn't necessarily know about.
And it doesn't say on here, I don't think. Who would we make checks out to? Have that been decided?
Yes, if you are interested in making a donation, you can make them out to the Gilderland Central School District. And in the subject line at the bottom, just write the Singleton Memorial Scholarship.
I mean, if everybody's comfortable, we can vote to suspend the rules and then vote to approve it tonight so they don't have to wait until the next meeting. Right, to go ahead and start?
I'll make that motion.
Make a motion, Barb. Can I have a second? Judy? All in favor to suspend the rules, we can vote? Pass is 9-0. Now can I have a motion to accept the scholarship award? Rebecca, second, Nate. All in favor?
All right.
High, passes 9-0. So that can go ahead and start then.
All right, thank you so much. I can't tell you how touched Jen Singleton and her family are by this gesture. She's just really moved by the generosity and the commitment and the compassion to recognize Damian for all he did for us. So that's just really special. The next topic is a little more difficult. So I wanted to provide an update on where we stand with the mask mandate in New York and, you know, provide an opportunity for the board to talk about kind of what happens next. But I'll set the stage by saying, as everybody knows, Governor Hochul lifted the statewide indoor mask mandate for businesses effective February 10th. She did not lift the mandate for several high-density settings. There's lots of them, but schools are under that list. She announced that the plans, she plans to reassess the mask requirement in schools sometime in early March. And she has a press release up on her website that she says the assessment will be based on public health data, including cases per 100,000 residents, percent positivity rates, hospital admission rates, vaccination rates, global trends, and pediatric hospitalizations. She has signaled the data are quote-unquote "moving in the right direction." However, she has not provided any benchmarks to say what number on any of those data points will be the number that is the determining factor, or what combination of numbers. And I'll just point out that until the time the mandate is lifted, masks are still required in school buildings. And then a reminder, the mask for, the mandate for masks on school buses is actually established at the federal level. So even if she were to lift the statewide mandate, it's our understanding at this time that unless something changes at the federal level, masks would still be required on buses. So it's my understanding, based on a meeting I had with all of my superintendent colleagues and four county commissioners of health, that likely soon, which I can't define, the governor will lift the mandate for masks in schools. One thing I heard from the commissioners from the four local counties, it was Albany, Schenectady, Skowheri, and Saratoga, it is not likely that the State Department of Health will say, okay, counties, now your job to figure out what the rule will be in your county. Which means that school districts will be left to figure out what do we do within our school districts when that time comes that the mask mandate is lifted. I've spent a lot of time talking with our administrative team and our recovery task force, that group that meets every Tuesday at 3:30, about, well, what would we or could we or should we do here in Gilderland? And I'll just say what that recommendation is, that at the point when they are no longer mandated by a higher authority, that we would look to change our level of requirement to words that are to the effect of, we highly recommend masks, but we don't require them. And I'm happy to talk about the whys for that, if there are questions or comments or thoughts.
I mean, I'm in agreement.
I just wanted to make reference to the public comments and some of the emails that we've been getting, just that I know people are frustrated and have been writing us and just, you know, the second kind of what you said, Dr. Wells, we're not in a position to make any changes. We have to follow the governor's rules. The district already tried to do that and put their district in jeopardy of funding. So that's not a wise decision or something that we can control. So I think people just need to be patient. But I'm fully in support of, you know, once that mandate's lifted, to changing it to recommended, but not mandated. That's speaking for myself.
I'll just, one of the things that came out loud and clear from our building administrators is the enforcement of a mask mandate in the absence of kind of a higher authority. You know, by and large, our school community has been really cooperative. For example, Saturday night, I was with 1,000 other people in the large gym for the Pops concert. Everybody had a mask. No one raised an eyebrow about it. But in the absence of that, our collective concern among the leadership team is, that's all our people will be doing, what our teachers will be doing, what our administrators will be doing, is, and at what cost? And, you know, I'm keenly aware of concerns about health, but we don't want to lose learning opportunities. We don't want to lose our work around social emotional well-being. We don't want to lose work around DEI because of it. The other part of this is, so masks are one part of our mitigation strategy. They're not our whole mitigation strategy. So between now and when this happens, can we up the ante on our other strategies? Ventilation, providing additional PPE for those who do want to wear? I'm going to guess we'll have plenty of faculty who still want to wear masks. And, you know, are there other things that we can do to encourage, you know, safe coexistence within our buildings?
I agree with Seema, I, and you, that I would hate for this to become a worsening distraction than it already is at this point. And by making it a recommendation versus a requirement, I think is a reasonable compromise. But I do think it's important for us to point out that the public comments, you know, almost a million Americans have died in two years from this virus. 1,000 children have died in America from this virus. 1,000 children do not die in two years from a cold. So equating it with just a cold and we should all get over it, I think is a fallacy. And I think we need to really point that out. And that by eventually going to a recommendation, not a requirement, does not negate that fact. I just wanted to express that.
I also just wanted to share a little bit about our vaccination status because I'm hoping there are a lot of families who are watching this. As you know, we sent out a survey twice now, trying to get data on the percentage of our school community, our students, who are fully vaccinated. And currently, we have, we've heard from 2,700 of our staff, of our families, about 2,700 of our students. And of that 2,700, 90% are fully vaccinated. However, we haven't heard from 2,800 families. And we really would like to, whether, you know, simply saying, no, we're not vaccinated, but we believe that, because that rate is 56% vaccination among our students. We believe it's higher than that, but we don't have the data to do that. And the only other way for us to get that is to have one of our nurses sit in front of a computer and look up every single one of those students on the NISIS platform, which is the state's repository for that data. Go ahead, Barbara.
Just a quick question. I've been asked by a number of people, why do we need that data? They thought it was sort of a personal thing, and is the state requiring us to submit data like that? Or why are we asking that question?
Well, I think part of it is to help us come to, well, where do we go next in the pandemic? And there was a sense from the governor's list of criteria that vaccination rates would play into what do we do with masks? And I think to be able to, I have no idea how many of our students are vaccinated, puts us in a place where we can't be as confident. So I think it would be very helpful for us to know we have 80%, 90%, 60%, whatever it might be, and then look building by building as we're thinking about other mitigating factors if, in fact, masks are gone. So that's why.
We could, I mean, the information is available to us, so it's not like it's private to a certain extent. Our nurses could certainly look it up if they need to.
Right.
And if we have to have that number to, you know, move the recommendation, then, you know, that's probably something we're going to have to do. It'd certainly be easier if we got that information from the parents, easier and quicker.
Yes, and we talked earlier today about going to that plan of, you know, looking up all those data points.
So to your point, nurses routinely look up vaccination records.
Oh, yeah.
They look up vaccination records for MMR, for all the school-required vaccines. And if a child is missing a school-required vaccine, that they look up in NISIS. They call the parent and say, your child's due for their meningococcal vaccine, call their pediatrician. That happens all the time. That happens all the time. So my question is, I understand it's a huge ordeal to look up 2,800 children, but it does happen. And we've, I think I could be wrong about this, but I think we've hired additional per diem nursing staff to help with the crisis in January with the Omicron variant, which has been lessened to a great degree. Could we use some of that staff?
That's exactly what we talked about.
Okay.
So we're looking at, you know, how busy is our testing center? That's really come down. So we are going to use some of these personnel to do some of that work, but there's still plenty of work for nurses to do right now. So it's not at all that they are with time on their hands. All right. Any other questions on that? Yes.
I had a question. I agree with you, Rebecca, all in favor of what new plans might be given.
I think I just have one more thing that looks like it's on here twice. And that is, this is the draft of the 2223 calendar. There are no changes to it. And we met with our stakeholder group on Monday, who also reviewed it and have no changes. Technically, it's ready to go. I'm going to not ask the board to approve it tonight, because it is contingent upon a signed memorandum of agreement with the Gilderland Teachers Association. And I would like to, you know, have that complete before we actually take action on this.
I have a question, and I'm sure I'm not thinking right on this, but I thought that Election Day was the first Tuesday after the first Monday.
It is.
So, but we have a holiday on the first and not on the eighth?
It's a conference day.
It's, okay, I thought we did it on Election Day.
We often have, but there was a strong sentiment that having the conference day, the day after Halloween, would be a good thing.
That's right. I remember we did discuss that. I just thought it was always on Election Day.
It's often been that way, but it worked out in a very persuasive group of people, said, please, 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 please.
No, and I think that's an excellent idea. I just thought, wait a minute.
No, we have not changed Election Day.
Well, and I thought, I could be wrong, you know, maybe it's another holiday.
No, no.
Okay.
And it's a conference day, as opposed to a Halloween.
Right, right. No, that's fine.
So this will be up for action next meeting?
On March 8th. And in between, I'll work with the Teachers Association to get that MOA ready to go. So that also needs to be approved by the board, I believe. So we'll do a package deal on March 8th.
That's the same item, right, twice?
All right. It was so good, it's on here twice.
Okay, thank you.
That's the end of my stuff.
Thanks, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have board president information. We have a list of policies A through K. Anybody in policy want to make a note of anything for us to look at, or?
If you read these over, if you have any questions, you know, prior to the next meeting, give Maria and myself a call, and so that we can address them, you know, before the meeting.
I just have a quick question, I guess, the letter G, about the communication between, or no, is that a, is that a, that's one that's been there?
Yes.
Okay. Complaints about, okay, I'll read through them. Thank you. Is that it, Barb?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have action items. School business management, I'll turn it over to Neil.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First item this evening is a resolution to authorize the purchase of school buses and vehicles. And they have a bond proposition for that on May 17th, 2022. As a reminder, this amount of $976,000 will fund the purchase of eight replacement school buses.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution to authorize a school bus and vehicle bond? Proposition Rebecca, second. Blanca? This is a roll call vote, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Oh, sorry, all in favor to, oh, no, wait, got the motion, sorry. Go ahead, Linda, sorry.
Mrs. Blaseyak?
Yes.
Dr. Butterfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederico?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzalez Parker?
Yes.
Mrs. Person?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tollhill?
Yes. There's a lot of background here. It's a lot of unions.
So that passes nine zero.
Thank you.
This evening is a resolution to approve the sale or transfer of the Cobblestone Schoolhouse property.
Can I have a motion to approve the sale?
I will make that motion.
Barb, second. Kim, oh, second. Second, Kim. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve an installment purchase plan, and that's to replace tap ears, eight tap ears within the district.
Can I have a motion to approve the purchase agreement? Nate, second. Kelly, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
And then finally, this evening, I'm pleased to announce the receipt of donations. We received two donations, one from the Wesmir PTA, and one from the Pine Bush PTA for the purchase of playground equipment.
Can I have a motion to approve these donations? Rebecca, second. Nate, any questions or comments?
Yep, I'd like to abstain from this vote.
And just thank you to the both PTAs. Can I, oh, we already had a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes eight zero with one extension from Kim Blaseyak. And that's it. Thank you, Neil. Next, superintendent, action. Dr. Wiles?
Thank you. I just have one action item this evening, and this is the contract ratification with the Gilderland Support Staff Association. And the resolution reads, be it resolved, Board of Education authorizes Superintendent of Schools Marie Wiles to execute the proposed memorandum of agreement between the Gilderland Central School District and the Gilderland Support Staff, Support Services Association of the Gilderland School District for the duration of the collective bargaining agreement, July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2024.
Can I have a motion to approve the contract ratification? Kelly, second. Rebecca, any questions or comments? All in favor? Passes nine zero. Okay, thank you, Dr. Wiles. Next, we have board president, action. We have a short list of policies, A through C. Can I have a motion to approve the policies? Blanca, second. Kim, any questions or comments? All in favor?
All.
Passes nine zero. Thank you. Next, we have board committee reports. We'll start with audit.
Being scheduled for tomorrow morning at 8:30, and we'll hear the results of that next week.
Thank you, Kelly. Next, communications.
I think because of the background here, I'm not going to be able to do the report. There's too much noise. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
You definitely can hear.
Okay, then we'll try it. We, yes, we just met last week, as soon as I turn this around here. I won't get, the first item, we basically discussed the thought exchange, and since Marie gave that report, that was basically our discussion. Also, our communication specialists from BOSI's provided us a follow-up on the discussion we had about the delivery of budget information and other information to residents who have post office boxes. Patrice spoke with a representative from the mailing house Centron, who provided some suggestions on how to better secure the delivery of materials. They suggested working with the postmaster to address the issue itself. There seems to be a need to include both a home address and a post office box on the item in order for it to get there. But Patrice will continue doing some research with the Altamont Post Office. We then discussed section one of the handbook. We thought this would be a good time to just kind of review. We thought we would recommend at the end of this process to the board, we're not recommending now, but we might recommend that every three years, we kind of do this kind of thing. We reviewed section one of the handbook. The suggested changes included revising all of the his/her references to them, they, as appropriate. There's one change in the section responding to community members' emails. We wanted to add or vice president, so it would, the response could be from the president or vice president. Therefore, it all wouldn't fall on the president to respond to every email. Under the section on visiting schools, there were two changes. In number seven, we're changing guidance counselor to the term school counselor. And the committee also recommended adding a new statement to visiting schools about when we attend the school as a parent, that we should use our personal email account rather than our school account. So we need to separate our identities by using our personal accounts when we are communicating as parents. I reached out to Blanca, who could make it that meeting, and to see if she had any other recommendations, and she had none at that time. Next meeting, we will do board two, section two, which is board meetings. We talked about having the handbook on the website. Our BOSI specialist explained that because of the accessibility issues, we can't just post the PDF. But she said another option is to post a contact person on the website for those who wish to receive a copy. And we're going to go ahead and do that as soon as we're done with this review. Our next meeting is March 9th at 4:30. And that's it.
Thank you, Gloria. Our next, business practices?
We met last week, I believe, and the first topic was, we talked about the Singleton Scholarship. And the second topic, John Rizzo was there, and I'm going to ask Neil if he could just explain what the calendar is on that.
Sure. So the committee brought an issue to the committee, really, it's regarding our ending year fund balance, amount of operating funds that we have. And it's really an issue this particular year. We haven't had it in other years, but there's two driving issues this year. One is private transportation contracts. We've had a shortage of drivers. We've had to contract more for transportation services. So unanticipated and a higher cost to do so. So that's one factor impacting this year's financial picture. The second is tax surchargeary settlements. So these are challenges to assessments. This happened in 2019 with Gilderland, when they did a townwide revaluation. Even though it's a few years later, the big ones, the commercial properties, those take time to work through, and we are working through those. The bigger they are, the more complex they are, the longer it takes to work through those tax surcharges. So we have paid some of them already, but we have more to pay. Again, they're the larger ones. So what happens is there's either a settlement or a court judgment, and we have to reimburse the property owner through a settlement. So we've had to do that on a number of occasions. We've got a couple still large ones out there that we expect might hit this year. That's also contributing to our operating deficit. So we do have a way out of this. It goes to our fund balance and reserves. That money we set aside for situations like this, where we have unanticipated expenses and we need to utilize those funds. In order to access them, though, because we will likely exceed our budget with some of these payments, is that we would, in conjunction with that, have to amend our budget. And there is a mechanism to do that in New York State. So we would be coming back to the board, and we're going to let this run out, because the financial picture, we still have a few months left in the school year. We'll figure out exactly where we are and what we need to go forward with the step. If we do need to make a budget amendment, we will do so closer to the end of the year. We'll have a firmer number to be able to do that. And really, alls we're doing is we're temporarily amending our expenditures for the year and our revenues for the year. It all balances out. It doesn't affect us going forward. We will revert back to our original budget when we start looking at next year. So it's a temporary mechanism that allows us to manage these unanticipated expenses, be able to address them, and then reset going forward on a year-over-year basis. It does not affect our tax levy, tax levy or tax cap. It has no implications for that either, because we are adding revenue at the same time we're adding expense.
Thank you, Neil.
And we have not set a time for our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The DEI committee, I don't know if Gloria or you, is it Kelly or Gloria?
I asked Gloria if she could do it, because I was on the meeting. However, I was occupied the whole time. So Gloria, I don't mean to put you on the spot. You might not have heard or got my email, but the minutes are online, if anybody would like to view them, if Gloria would like to, or is able to give a summary, that would be great.
I've had so many, some technical problems here, I couldn't even read, I couldn't get to the documents.
I could probably do a quick update. Just very briefly, we heard from the four subcommittees, and their work is ongoing. The audit committee is continuing to look at some additional help to get the external equity audit completed. So more to come on that. We also had an update on the land acknowledgement piece. Mike Lester and Matt Pinchenot have reached out to some of those communities to get their input on, this is what we'd like to do, what do you think? And they haven't had a response yet, so that's also continuing. We also had a lengthy discussion about multicultural observances, really inspired by our students from the Muslim Student Association, who provided public comment. At our last regular board meeting, we actually shared that with the DEI committee when it meant, when it met. And we also shared kind of a comprehensive calendar of observances. And we talked about how those can be, how that could be an educational tool to raise awareness for the various observances that happen during the year that are not necessarily captured on our calendar. So there's more to come on that. We did talk about committee membership. We're coming into March, and it's time for about six or seven of our current committee members to roll off the committee at the end of their two-year term, and then to recruit some new individuals. So I think committee members were asked to let Mrs. Sim know by March 15th if they're interested in rolling off the committee, and then we'll start the process of recruiting. And then we wrapped up with a conversation around the book that we're reading together, The Five Practices for Equity-Focused Leadership, and it was a chapter on routines for building effective and cohesive equity leadership teams. Happy to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Wiles. And last, but not least, I don't think I mentioned policy, right?
No. We're taking a few week hiatus.
What?
Because of the budget, and we'll be in April. So this is not.
Wow, policy is resting. Okay. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Any board issues, ideas, and sharing? Oh, I'm sorry, first public comment, number two. Linda, are there any more? Thank you. Board issues, Blanca?
I just wanted to share that I went to the Pops concert, I think a couple of us did, and I was really blown away by the performances and the level of talent and the level of enthusiasm, both by the spectators and the students themselves. It was really such a beautiful event. And I really enjoyed the 80s theme, from the attire to the music. And I wanted to put a plug in there for 90s grunge. Thank you.
Next year. This is just a follow-up from a parent that wrote to us about children going into honors as they enter high school or the accelerated courses. And that's a very interesting question that I just wanted to share. Why aren't all students informed of the required demonstrated behaviors to be recommended for honors? And, you know, we've had this discussion about limiting numbers of people that can take honors courses many, many times over the last 10 or 15 years. last 10 or 15 years. And the point that the letter writer suggested is that students get this, a letter saying that they haven't been selected, but they haven't been told the criteria before that. And then the letter writer said, now you've cast doubt on their abilities in the classroom. And so I guess I'd just like our administrators and perhaps the board in some fashion to explore, is it possible, first of all, to tell kids ahead of time what the requirements are to be nominated by their teacher to take these advanced placement courses? And secondly, can we, do we have the finances, the time, or the treasure to expand access, you know, to those honors courses? I think, you know, as you look over time, it's very, very difficult for a child that hasn't started that, I guess you call it honors track or whatever, to then suddenly they kick into gear sophomore year. And I don't know how easy it is for them now to take, say, honors chemistry or something. But Mike is here, so if he wanted to address that or address it in the future sometime, just, it's just, you don't want to restrict the student's ability to succeed. And it, over the years, it seems like, you know, we, we will only give certain kids the option. I understand that this year, at least there was the ability of the child to challenge, or the parents to challenge the assessment, and, you know, give the child an opportunity.
I'm hesitant to answer this question just because it's a very complicated answer because it depends on a lot of different contexts of what we're talking about. Are we talking about seventh grade students getting selected for accelerated? Are we talking about eighth grade students getting selected for the honors classes and ninth grade? Or are we talking about the high school classes, students in the honors class, in the honors classes and going on to the next honors class, or students that are in the Regents class trying to go into an honors class? So there's lots of different variation in all of those. One of the things I would say is, I think the teachers, it's a pretty generic expectation of what they're looking for. They're obviously looking for academic performance in the class that they're in currently. And it can vary depending on the class that they're in. But they're also looking for active learners in the classroom, students who are participating in actively in the discussions that are going on in those classrooms, students that are asking questions or furthering a discussion or showing interest that goes deeper than even what's being discussed in the class. Those are the kind of observational things that the teachers are looking for. But again, I think we've done, like, I can only speak specifically to the high school because when we're talking about the eighth grade and seventh grade, I think it'd be better if they responded to that. But at our level, what, what we've been doing is, the recommendations are made. If this, we ask that the teachers conference with the students and make them aware of why they were recommended or not recommended for the class. And then we give them a time period to demonstrate those things that the teacher had not seen in the current class. And they basically, most of those recommendations are being, these conferences are being done in December, and the students have all the way till the end of the third quarter to demonstrate those skills. So it's not a closed door, you're never going to get in. If the student demonstrates those skills or what the teacher's looking for, the teacher notifies the counselor and the recommendation has changed. And then even at the end of the process, let's say the student doesn't meet the criteria that the teacher is looking for, there is an override process to still get into those honors AP classes. The only thing, the only caveat we put to that is that is based on seat availability. So we're not going to increase the number of sections to accommodate overrides, but if there are seats remaining in there and they override it, we do a lottery based on the number of overrides. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. But I don't know if I answered your specific question, though.
In a general way, but demonstrated behaviors, that's such a vague thing. You've mentioned some of those, act of participation in class and, you know, those types of things. But could that be laid out for students at the beginning of the year by their teacher? Maybe, you know, when you have the parent night or whatever?
Absolutely. I always think we can be, I also always think we can be clear about what we're looking for. So yeah, absolutely. I think that's a great suggestion. Because again, not every student's starting out in the honors, and they might not know what we're looking for. Like, even if it's a Regent, a student in English 10 Regents who may want to go on to AP English Literature or AP English Language in 11th grade, we could talk about what those teachers will be looking for if they're trying to go into that next level. So, absolutely.
Barb, I'm just, oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to respond to, I think if you're talking about the specific email that we were mentioning before, if I remember correctly, there was definitely more of the parent, like, communication with the parent piece, I think, was mentioned. But in, just in general, I'm in total agreement about the access piece, at least more so for the middle school. I'm just talking about from, I'll put a parent hat on for a second, because I know, you know, seventh grade, they get a letter saying, you know, you might be selected for accelerated, et cetera. These are things, behaviors that we're looking for. And then it says, and it will go in your permanent record in bold underline. So as a, you know, 12-year-old, you're like, oh, my God, this is serious, which I guess is good. But I also feel like they need to balance that with access about, here are the, you know, here's what you could be doing if you also do, do you know what I mean? It's, it just seems not so welcoming. And I'm not saying, you know, it needs to be openly welcomed to everybody, but I do feel like it needs to be better balanced with the, you know, more inclusive. Right now, it just seems a bit more exclusive the way that it's presented to students. But I do think what you're talking about, if you're talking about that specific incident with the email, I do think it was talking about parents being informed. Because I don't know, you know, if everybody knows that, like, once that track kind of starts, it changes the course, it kind of changes the trajectory in high school of what courses are available or how many degrees of freedom that they can take things. So I, I am in total agreement with that. I just wanted to point that out.
You know, just, just to add to this, though, because again, like I said, this is, this is a very complicated thing. And like, I'll, I'll talk about from the other end. Sometimes we will have parents who, and students who want to challenge into a course. And we commit that they're going to now, okay, say they're going to be in college physics in 11th grade. And we make financial decisions as a high school based on the requests that people make. And then we get a quarter into the year and they're struggling, or they're not performing at the level that they want. And now the concerns start to come up about, well, I'm not sure this grade is going to be what I want on my college transcript. And then we get requests to go back to the Regents class. So, so there, it kind of cuts both ways. If you make a commitment to that you're going to challenge this class, we ask that you be in that class for the school year. Now, again, we, we are, we try to be flexible. Sometimes we get into situations where we're like, this isn't in the best interest of the student, we make changes. But I just want to make it clear that it, the door swings both ways. You make a commitment, we want you to honor that commitment. And that may mean you're not getting a 95 in this class. You might be getting an 80. And that's okay. That's great. But that isn't always okay to the family. So. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I just want to add too, since you brought it up, Barb, that since we've talked about looking at policies before, and I don't know what the actual policy is about this piece with the, oh, well, okay. This would also be, I think, a great place, and not saying this year because I know, you know, even next year, I know that everybody's overloaded with work.
... themselves, over 90 of them over the years have been successful. So that was, to me, was a good sign.
Thank you, Barb, for mentioning it. Any, any other board ideas, issues and sharing? Blanca?
I just wanted to circle back to the little group of students that we had earlier. They asked us to pass a resolution. Or what do we, what do we do about that?
I asked if they could send some information in email about the, like, so we could do some follow-up reading and then see what the potential next steps are.
Okay, so we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Later. Got it.
And I don't remember when our next meeting is, but I know that the musical's coming up, I think in the high school, and then also the Mask Musical at the middle school. So I'll just put promo out there that everybody should go. As of right now, it's in person, and I hope it stays that way. I'm super excited about that. So, so I guess look out. I'm sure that there'll probably be emails sent to families about that and how to purchase tickets, et cetera.
After break, Andy, is that what I heard about tickets?
Okay, cool. Okay, any other board issues, ideas, and sharing? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Judy, second. Nate, any questions or comments? All in favor? I pass as nine zero. Thank you, everybody.